I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with every and justice.
Welcome everybody. I won't steal your phone today. Okay. Let's call a meeting to order to get motion approved, the agenda.
Come on.
Are any additions are correct? Second.
I have a first and a second, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Motion carries, approved the minutes from March first.
Actually, good.
Go ahead Sandy. I'll second that motion.
Okay, we have a first and a second on the minutes, all in favor?
Aye.
Motion carries. General public concerns, Linda, you have some information for the general public?
I do. Um. Let's see. Have like a. Um, as you know, in our office, every odd year is a revaluation here. So, and every odd year, when we do revaluations, we have to be in compliance with, um, the state. So, um, I just kinda wanted to let people know what's going on in Humboldt County. First of all, um, ag lands, well, I haven't got down to the nuts and bolts on that, but we're expecting like, maybe nothing changing on that. So, there'll be no decrease or no increase. On, um, residential. Let's see. We had a hundred and forty sales for residential in 2020, and the median assessment level was ninety percent. And the law requires us to maintain a five percent margin, ninety-five to a hundred and five percent median assessment level. Uh, multi-res properties saw similar increases with average county-wide increase of seventeen percent.
So, this is taking all the sales of residential property?
Uh-huh.
And the sales were at?
Ninety.
Ninety, the evaluations were at ninety percent of the sales prices, is what you're saying?
Yep.
So, we're gonna have to bump that up to get into the law or into the state guidelines with ninety-five to a hundred and five?
Right.
You're fully good news.
I know it, ninety percent, I know it. But it doesn't necessarily mean an increase in taxes.
No, no. But it has to be done in order to stay in the state compliance, or they'll do it themselves.
Yes, and when they come in and do it, they just do it across the board. And, um, we get to at least pick and choose, like, maybe one area, then it go up a little more than the other.
Yeah, certain type of houses sometimes go up more value, and, you know, like the standard two bedrooms, they, they kinda stay pretty flat. Well, the three bedrooms might be more valuable because of people moving into the community or something, things like that. Not necessarily that, but.
Yeah, but you, you never know what the public is, what their desire is. You know, maybe they'll all be wanting two-story houses and.
Yeah.
So, but I think, uh, the one thing that, um, is driving it a lot too is the low interest rates.
Yeah, home sales.
Yep. Um, and commercial, we haven't, I might have raised commercial five percent two years ago. But this year, um, our adjusted median assessment on all per, commercial properties was seventy-eight point six five. And that seventy-eight point six, actually, if we just do it on, we had eight sales of commercial. And if it's based on those eight sales, it was seventy-four. But the Department of Revenue has come up with something they call confidence level. And, um, and they also had appraisals, I think they had twelve appraisals, but they came into Humboldt County and did on their own. And then they went back and calculated the value in Des Moines, and then we get those, and then we add them to our sales list. And then we apply this confidence level thing, which really does help us. So, at least bumped it up to seventy-eight, from seventy-four percent to seventy-eight point six five. So, the increase, maybe it wasn't quite as bad, but, um, the overall value of commercial property can go up about twenty percent.
That's quite a jump.
Yes, it is. Yep, but if I don't, if we don't do it, the state will.
And these are, these, uh, changes won't, you won't see it coming out of your checkbook until twenty twenty-three, twenty-two, twenty-three?
Correct. These are for values established January first, twenty-twenty-one, payable twenty-two, twenty-three.
So, is there, is the guideline for commercial, I, I was gonna kinda sidetracked on that. You said our number was seventy-eight point six five, what? Is there the, the number like the residential for if we don't keep it at a certain, they bump it up?
You wanna know what residential was?
No, I know the residential, I'm just saying the commercial.
It's ninety-five to a hundred and five.
Right, right.
For commercial?
Yep.
Okay. I didn't know if they did it different for each one, or, but if it's all, so we're pretty low on that one.
Yeah, we are. I know.
But you don't usually have a whole lot of commercial. Would that consider like Chatlins being sold, is that?
They're industrial.
That's what I wondered.
Yep, something like that's in, uh, considered industrial, and they're not in the.
They're not in that mix, okay.
So, um.
Wow.
Yeah, I know. But I just hope, you know, we keep in mind, that doesn't necessarily mean a big increase in their taxes. So. But you don't know that until, until the time comes, so. Um, and we've had, let's see. The town of Humboldt on residential, looks like it went up ten point nine percent. Livermore went up twenty-two percent. I, uh, the commercials, the others were all in the, like, the small towns and the township. Or five, six. Lot of them in the five and six range of increase.
Hmm.
Uh, commercial, um, everybody got a, got a nineteen, twenty percent on that. So.
Well, just as a reminder, we're going by the state guidelines.
Right, right, and we like, we like to do it here. If we don't do it and the state does it, then Trish has to take care of it. She has to, yes.
I love it when you do it.
Yeah, um, she has to apply the increase at this end then. So, we like to get everything done in our office, so they don't have to deal with it and.
Do you have a copy we can put in saying?
Oh, yeah.
This, this is based off sale, not just fictitious stuff. It's actually based on sale.
Yeah, and, uh, the housing, housing is just unbelievable. I mean, it's good.
Yeah, it's, you know, it's good, great when you're selling.
Right, yep, and I think, you know, the buyers, they're, they're getting a good deal with the low interest rates.
Yeah.
So, hopefully it continues that way, so. Any other questions?
All right, thank you.
That's all the good news we can stand today.
Okay, hopefully it's better from the other side.
Okay. Are you here for general public concerns?
No, I'm here for Todd.
Oh, you're coming for Todd, conservation?
Yep.
Yep. Hi.
Just sitting over there.
Okay, Jessica.
Me, I'll give you a lot better news than the lady prior.
We hope so.
Jessica Goodnell, hi, um, principal and daycare director over in Gilmore City. Um, oh goodness, over a year ago, January of last year, came in and requested some funding for, um, some of our outdoor spaces.
Playground, and your playground?
Our playground, yes, and shared with you just some makeups of our families and how they basically come from all over the county and into some other counties. Um, but the great things have, things have changed since January, so we did have to use the funding to prioritize some of our indoor spaces. Um, so just requesting today the, the same amount as last year to actually do those projects this summer. Um, I believe in July, we received five thousand dollars from, from you all, thank you very much for that. Um, but this year, we, we have some more pressing playground matters than adding the sandbox and the, the water tables like I requested last year. We do have a, an area in the playground that needs a fall stage surface. So, if you go and look at playgrounds around the area, they either have like mulch, or they have some rubber surfacing under any type of slide or swing set. Well, we have a little area that, um, our one to two-year-olds swing at, that we need to make sure that, um, we continue our licensing. That's, that's why we have to close it down if we, if we don't add the fall stage. So, that's what we're working on this summer of making sure that we have that all situated, so they can be outside. It's gonna be a beautiful summer, it can be lit, twenty-twenty-one summer, it's gonna be the best ever. Um, so that's one of our priorities with this funding. A second would be, if we have enough, would be, um, our basketball court area that's inside our daycare fencing has some cracks that we would like to resurface. And we would add like some sensory paths, those are, um, kind of the new, the new trend in outdoor areas are to add pathways for kids to follow and be creative, but also exercise and enjoy being outside, but give them a little, give them a little structure for how to play outside. So, just wanna keep it quick and hopefully easy on, on all of you. But we, we were very thankful for your funding last year and would love it to continue this year and make a priority of keeping our indoor and outdoor spaces great for our families. We're back at full capacity, so that's another praise for our daycare. We, we were in a slump for a little bit, but now we're, but now we're back. So, I didn't print anything out for you guys. Um, if you do want me to do some type of printout, I would love to put that together for you. But I just wanted to come back and say hello again, and we're all just, yes, we're all just learning the new normal here, so.
Hey Jessica?
Yes.
Would you give Trish your email address? Because, um, I'm on the mental health board and CSS has COVID money, uh, PERSA money, that, and that's a goal you, you could.
Yes.
For.
That would be great.
So, if you had taken, they, she said the safety bid, so just think of everything that you could need.
Okay.
And that would help you in, you know, if we place towards us, maybe towards mental health, the kids, you know, indoor and outdoor.
Okay.
So, leave your information with Trish, she can email it to me, I'll send you her information. You can, and if you have any questions, you can contact her, she wants to get this money in our account.
Oh, I love that, we have received some stipends from like DHS, but it mainly all goes towards salaries. Um, because like we had, this week is for anything, that's awesome, that's great. Are you Trish? Yes. Okay, so it's, it's my, my first initial J, and then it's my last name, G O O D E N O W. Okay. And then it's at G C B dot K twelve dot I A W S. Okay. Thank you.
And the other, I would, I'm just gonna remind you that for a request, we tried to put those together earlier.
Okay.
And I'm not, I don't know what we.
Yeah, I came in January last time.
Right, and we're, when we're trying to put the budget together so that we can crunch all the numbers.
January, December.
Okay.
That way, we at least know that, you know, we.
Sure.
Cause otherwise you may start looking under.
Well, we should learn under that.
Well, where we can find, try to find money to move from one fund to the other, cause it's, it's already been published for, um.
Two weeks.
Two weeks?
Yeah.
Yeah, so I guess we'll see what we can come up with, and hopefully Sandy would be able to help with some of that also.
Bruce brings up a good point, uh, December's not too soon for funding requests.
Okay.
In fact, it's probably not too soon for us to be looking at budget matters.
I know.
So, that, that Bruce brings up a very valid point, timing.
Yeah, March or November.
No, I mean, we're essentially wrapping this up for, uh, through it, but yeah. I think that's well put by Bruce, to, a reminder for everybody that December's not too early.
Okay.
Not at all.
Well, we'll see what we can do.
All right, thank you.
Keep hoping to do it, hope things go well this year.
Appreciate all of what you guys do over there with kids.
Thank you very much, thank you Jessica, nice to see you again.
Yes, thank you, thanks.
Now, this is Todd Lee character?
Yeah, I am playing today, you, you guys don't know me, Chris Clark.
Yeah.
So, Todd is a field owner, basically, he asked me to come up and, uh, you guys wanna improve our part-time employees, is that correct?
This, this is just what you do over here, right?
It is, it is, yep.
These are seasonal people that.
There are two of our seasonal employees that work three days a week, uh, they do ninety-nine percent of the mowing for us. Uh, Monty Hocus has been with us for, I think this'll be his fifth year, and John Riles, this'll be his third year, so. Guys work out really good, um, they usually work Monday, Tuesday, Wednesday, uh, if they need, if we need them, they'll work more, if we don't need them, they're happy to go home.
So, there are guys that have been with you that you can say go mow in a certain area, and they don't have to have a map drawn, they've been here helping them for.
They don't need supervision, they're get on equipment, and it's, it's easy, and it's really nice, so. And we looked at a three percent raise for those guys, so, that was, well, they're paid twenty dollars and thirty cents an hour.
That was in Todd's budget, so.
Correct.
Yep, I'll make a motion to hire him.
Second Dave's motion.
Now, the first and second on the hiring part-time season employees, all in favor?
Aye.
Motion carries.
So then the other two are our camp hosts, um, it'd be Rhonda Vincent, she's coming back out at, uh, Dodge Park.
Dodge Park again?
Kathy Huben will be coming back to Sheldon Park.
Okay.
Rhonda's been there many years.
Many years, yeah.
I was gonna say, she's been several.
Yeah.
How's the cabin situation out?
It's, honestly, it's great, we just, we just went live with being online as far as being able to rent those.
Yeah, taking them online and stuff.
Right, we haven't actually taken one yet, um, we're gonna kinda do a mock one ourselves, um, use our own credit card and make sure everything kinda works. How it's supposed to, but that's online now, so I think that's gonna be really nice, people are gonna be able to schedule out, I think up to two years in advance, so. Kinda where we're at with it right now. And if that doesn't work, we might, you know, we might scale it back to a year, and I know there's lots of campground that do, like, January first, you can get on and start renting cabins. And if it's gonna be that popular, we might have to go that route too, because, you know, the choice weekends get taken pretty quick.
We go more.
Yeah, or, yeah, yes, the demand is there, but right now too, it's, it was good for now, and.
And they are a hundred percent complete, I haven't been out by there for quite a while, and all the dirt work and stuff was done and.
It's all done, the grass is all.
We got grass, so we mow, good.
Yeah, we had, I think they were running last year, Bruce, maybe, hmm, maybe twenty times, or twenty different days, not twenty different people, but twenty different days, I guess.
Yeah.
So, it wasn't a lot, but we didn't really give them.
Finished it.
Finished it, but.
Those will be the true test this year.
It will be, it will be, but we had lots of positive comments, so.
Awesome foot.
You know, it's kinda like the camper situation, you know, it's, campers are getting fancier, so the cabins have to be a little bit fancier, just to.
They have to keep up.
Go along with the times, you know, so, so, yeah, I think it'll be positive.
I think, you know, being out there where they can do it over the internet's gonna help you a lot.
I do too, yeah.
Cause people driving down the road, they're searching that stuff, and they can pay for it with a credit card, it'll be.
Right, and they're running a hundred dollars, and then it ends up being a little bit more than that, because you've got the convenience fees and the things that go along with being able to use your credit card. So, I think it's gonna end up being probably, it's gonna cost you maybe a hundred and twelve-ish a night, so, but still.
Have we thought maybe about, or maybe they did, did we ever have an open house where people could?
We didn't, just based on COVID.
The COVID deal, but, I mean, I'd like, I drove out there and it was muddy, I didn't wanna walk up to the.
We just.
But I'd like to just stick my head in the door and see what, I'd like to see what they look like.
Anytime, you can shoot out a text, or we can send you a code, and you guys can go out there.
I, I don't wanna be responsible for.
You might wanna keep an eye on him, and if you find him living in.
He might live out there, yeah.
We'll give him a few days.
Yeah, you might wanna just be careful.
The room for semi-depart?
The taxes keep going up, it might only be.
It's gonna all make them up.
Might get them a lot more than they deserve.
Dave's camper, not sitting in the cabin, we got a, we got a new gig.
Yeah, they're full hook up right across from it, I know that.
Uh. What, what is the, uh, is it the same wage for both of the hosts of both parts, what is that?
Uh, three hundred and twenty-five dollars a week.
Three hundred and twenty-five a week, I know, I think it must have been in the minutes maybe of the conservation board, I wrote it, I didn't remember, three for both, okay.
For both, and Sheldon is a, you know, it's quite a big part, but Dodge is pretty busy too, and Rhonda's been with us, and, you know, like I said, they, they do a lot of, you know, they do all the cleaning, they.
Yeah, there's a lot of cleaning up the fire pits.
Just even the day-to-day interaction with the people who use the park is.
They're, they're, they're essentially part of the target.
Yeah, they live there, they, yep.
Yeah.
And what, they do a lot of, there's stuff on Facebook where Rhonda keeps a lot of people in, in the loop as to, are we full, are we, we have a couple of spots, so. I know our people that go there quite often appreciate that fact, so they do a good job.
They do, and Rhonda and Kathy both take a lot of phone calls on their own, personal cell phones, and, you know, so it's a, it's a seven-day week gig for them, and.
So, we need a motion on them as well?
Yeah, that would be better.
And make a motion for the two camp hosts as well?
Well, second Bruce's motion.
Yeah, I have a first and a second, uh, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Motion carries. Okay.
Sounds good.
Ken, and I didn't know if you guys wanted to talk about the Zoom meeting that was, that we had at the dam, or if you guys had any questions about that while I was here. If I can answer them, I will, I don't have as much of something, there was a petition going around that you wanted me to bring up, I just leave here for you guys.
Well, I, someone asked me about that petition, if we had ever been presented that, and I said, I know, I saw the petition at one of the convenience stores, so I said.
That's right.
To my knowledge, I haven't seen it presented, so I would just soon, if you guys wanna present it, we can either keep it, or you guys take it back, so we don't have the, the chance of losing it, what do you think, Trish?
I think that's awesome.
I think if, if you wanna keep it over there, that way.
Yep, but you know, we have it in our hand.
Yeah.
There's two hundred and forty-nine names on here, give or take, um, the wording, the wording for the petition is basically, you know, uh, to make the river better, um, it's not a real specific.
It's not like, it's not like they got an idea for it, it's just like, we want it better.
It's very generalized, yes, yep.
And I think what, I don't remem, I looked through a couple of times the other night on the meeting, do you remember Sandy, or did you look, was there like fifty or sixty people on there?
There was.
Correct, there was over fifty.
There was eighty-one signed up, and at any given time, the most people that were on were seventy-two.
Okay.
So, typically, it stayed around that sixty-one to sixty-five for people that were on, but at one time, I think the max was seventy-two, is what they.
And for the most part, they did a really good job of keeping the meeting flowing, and we didn't have anybody get out of, out, way out in left field about arguing about.
Right.
There was a couple of comments that, towards the end, that I got a little upset about, because it was the, basically, the assumption was something was said that the people that are in charge of the dam have neglected the dam. Well, we own the dam, but we don't have a thing to do with the, the river. We can't go, we can't hire Jensen's or somebody to go in there and start digging sand out of that above the dam, that's not, that's the DNR. And so, that, I, when they made that comment, I was wanting to get back on, but it was towards the end of the meeting, I just thought, shut your mouth, kinda like now.
No, I thought they did a good job, I don't know.
Well, was it the same way with the, the gates and stuff like that, it's the DNR that's telling you when, if this, that you can up forward and raise the gate, things like that, of, uh, Redwood?
Rutland.
Rutland, that one.
I'm sorry, wrong, wrong R.
Yeah, sometimes if you, if you guys wanna go up to Rutland, I'd be happy to take you up there, just so you can get your eyes back, I'm sure all of you have seen it, but. Get your eyes back on it and see what it actually looks like, cause I'm sure here in the next, I would say, six weeks, we'll be running those painter gates out.
Well, I hope we get some water to start bringing up our levels again, cause it, it's, you know, you go across through a one-sixty-nine bridge and look down towards the water plant. It's low, I don't know if I've ever seen it that low.
No, there's, there's not much water.
The other day, the river gave them below three, so.
Bruce, did you get your, you were discussing, are they having further meetings on this, like that one, they have scheduled?
Nothing is scheduled yet, Eric, but.
Okay, they just told us in the next few Tuesday nights that we would, once, they took questions, and she had this chart, and then she was putting things on there, that they were gonna ask, I'm assuming, the DNR, or ask.
Whoever, whoever they felt could answer those questions, they're gonna go after.
By all the people.
I think most of those are answered, um, but again, once those are all put together and answered, you guys can, you'll get a copy of those and.
Then she said, the next, in a couple of weeks, we'd come back and have another Zoom-type meeting.
After they get.
After they get those questions that were asked, answered, and then try to get some direction as to which, which way we would. There, there was a large number that wanted the dam left alone on the top side, so that they can continue to do whatever they do, but they just don't know how we're gonna, what we do with all the soils. And then there's the two people from the different towns that talked about tiered, stepping it down and making, uh.
Like a rapids out.
Rapids and stuff like, so they talked and how, which.
I, I just have this feeling the DNR is putting a lot of thought into this dam, cause they did that flood survey here a year or two ago. So, they're, they're thinking about doing something, they just haven't told us what they're thinking about doing yet.
Right.
And there'll be a story also coming out, but we'll be.
I think I already got it, I looked yesterday on, the, one of the hosts was, had emailed me and said, asked any questions, I could send to this, but there was also another link for some other things, so I didn't have.
Came out Thursday, we did some corrections on Friday, and I think she was hoping to send it out this weekend, so that's probably as well, so, yeah.
So, no scheduled Zoom, but they believe that they will once, uh, they ask more information.
Yes, and I think eventually we have to get an in-person meeting.
Right.
You know, I think that's gonna, eventually down the road once.
And once, I think, once all of the questions supposedly have been asked, it's eventually gonna come back to that board, which is gonna have to come back to this board, which says, what are the best options, what can we do, what direction should we do?
Yeah, there's, there's gonna be some big decisions being made prior to the next two months, just, you know, the next step is probably gonna cost a lot of money, you know, if we don't do that, and.
Yeah, no matter what you do, it's gonna cost a lot of money, the only thing that doesn't cost money is doing nothing.
Right.
And that costs.
What's that cost money?
Yeah.
Well.
Travis and Lincoln joined the meeting.
Okay.
All right.
Thanks, thanks for watching, good day.
You too.
Randy.
Um, I'm back, uh, you may recall, I was here last week, so I'm like a bad penny, I'm returning, and, uh, this was in dealing with a, a letter to be sent for violations, and then also, uh, issuing penalties for, uh, non-compliance with building permit, and I sent, I think I sent everybody a text on the information that I got from, uh, county attorney. I sent him the Article seventeen, which deals with the penalties and violations. I also sent him a copy of the letter that I had written, that we had tabled until I had talked with, or contacted him. And he sent back to me the reply that I had sent on to you, that basically that, uh, letter was okay, and that it, uh, would be sent by me, uh, cause we had talked about who it should be sent by, and then he also indicated that, uh, if there was any problems, that, uh, I would contact him as soon as possible. And, uh, I, as I said last week, I will send that, uh, and I will also contact them by phone and explain that that's what's coming, and also, as we indicated, that this was a minimal, uh, penalty in comparison to, uh, what the writing of the ordinance says. And so, uh, I'll, I'll make sure that I do that, and then also on that letter, you may recall that there isn't a place everywhere, if they. And so, uh, I'll, I'll make sure that I do that, and then also on that letter, you may recall that there isn't a place everywhere if they, if they want to appeal that, there's a process to go through that. So that's also included in that letter. So I guess I just, uh, I'm asking for approval to send that letter for that penalty.
I'll make a motion to add, send it.
What?
Do we need to make that as a form of motion?
They, they, they just did.
Oh, I'm sorry, I didn't, uh, sorry.
Yes.
You can second it.
All right, Miss Andy seconds. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Motion carries.
With regret, send a letter.
And I, thank you for your hard work.
No problem.
I think that the other thing is, is that we need to re, say that we, this is not a witch hunt by anybody. We're, we're just trying to get everybody to please comply and, and give you a call so that we aren't trying to figure out how to get a building off of someone else's edge of their property or.
Get your building off, somebody off their property.
I mean, it's just, just common sense type thing.
It just saves headaches.
Yeah.
Yeah, I have in works with the zoning board and the board of adjustments, looking at the, uh, as I mentioned before, the comprehensive plan and also the, um, the ordinance revision or rewriting or whatever would possibly come down the road. And I've already made a suggestion on, on this item and then another item that may need to be, uh, applied earlier than that. I would maybe do that as an amendment, so that we can have a little more specific language and, uh, maybe help with this kind of situation. And so currently the ordinance is quite, you know, wide open on, on what's capable and, and, uh, to be honest, I don't think we've had a huge problem the way we've been handling it so far, but I think we can maybe make it better. And so at some point in time, the board of adjustments and the zoning board will probably make a recommendation to this board of what we do with that. Currently, it's going to take a longer time to look at the comprehensive plan and also the ordinance itself, and so, uh, but that will be over a longer period of time. So maybe we can do something with this in the short term, which will, uh, maybe help it. So I don't, this is just kind of a, a situation that's maybe a little bit different than what we've dealt with before, so I think this will be good, so.
Well, this was discussion two. You put, uh, actual physical newspaper publications, reminders.
Yeah.
And then I would suspect with our high-tech, uh, website that there is information.
Yeah.
On the website as well. Like Bruce said, it's just, yes, it's a technicality, but it's an important one.
Yeah, it just makes it so much easier for everybody.
There is legal setbacks, yeah, that have to be followed up.
And I always tell people, and I honestly say, you can't work with a better person than Randy, uh, to get a permit and get any questions answered, and the best time to do that is prior to any thing being done.
Well, it makes it a lot easier moving a plan than it does moving a building.
Yeah, you can do it all in that ahead of time before you ever put the shovel in the ground.
Right.
And get your ducks in a row, which is, is what this is for. It saves everybody a lot of headache, most likely the person wanting the permit.
As we've done in the past, putting things in the paper, I also did, uh, a little spot on the radio last year, and I plan on doing that again.
Excellent.
Uh, this year, probably this month, because this is the time when people are maybe.
They start doing the planning and stuff like that.
So I'll make sure I do that again, and probably do that a couple of times this spring, you know, which, uh.
I think that helps. Should be a public service announcement.
Yeah, yeah, so I did that on the radio and also on the paper, so I'll do that again.
I'd put it on, uh, Fort Dodge KHBT, because a lot of your farmers listen to the Green Reports and some of their.
Here in town, KHBT?
No, Fort Dodge, also is now. KWMT is it?
KWMT.
KWMT, yeah.
Okay, I'll do that.
Five forty on your dial, there's.
Yeah, yeah.
A lot of them listen.
Been a while since I listened to that one. Yeah. I'm a farm wife.
I'm still glad, glad that's what.
Right. Okay, thank you, thank you, Randy, for doing a good job. Okay, now, I ain't quite nine-ten, but it don't matter.
Well, they're going to be on.
Oh, she's going to be on.
Two.
No, that doesn't matter, all right. So why don't we take a few minutes?
Kelly Augustine said she was on, she said she's dead, she's gone.
Yeah, Tabitha.
Uh, we'll wait, we got a few minutes here.
How about that update board on creation of a new tax district for Pioneer?
Yeah.
Okay, there has been a new tax district created actually, and that takes into consideration the dissolving of the city.
City, Limson, Pa, Pioneer.
Yep, and so now that that's done, um, there will be some funds coming in after, you know, probably the next week or two on that, and so I need to create, I just want to update and make sure it's okay that I create a fund for that money to go back into, and it will maintain the well that they have and pay the electricity on that. And so it's just, just want to make you guys aware of that.
Take care of what, two or three streetlights too, or is that?
Um, the streetlights will be taken care of by secondary roads.
Okay.
We've, they've disconnected all but, I think, two or three.
Two or three.
I think they're pulling the poles and everything, the ones that are.
Will there be any of those that go back to private?
They had the option, I don't know, they, you know, they gave them the option, if they wanted to keep it, they could, but it'd be their expense.
Right.
So I don't know.
Okay.
But the ones that aren't being private are going to be pulled.
And then the remainders would be secondary roads.
Yeah.
Yeah. This fund, I know from a lot of discussion about this, is essentially probably for well maintenance, but.
Yeah.
Could be potentially for other things related to that area.
Yeah.
You only got, what, five houses in town?
Yeah, I know it's not much.
I think there's only like five people in town, yeah.
There's more than that, but there's, there's only, it could be down to five.
Yeah, okay.
Good, so that's, that should be taken into information.
Mm-hmm.
Because a couple of them's in the care center, so, yeah, it could be down to five people now.
Yeah, unfortunately. And, uh, co-op and those residents all use the well, so.
Yeah. Yeah.
So you said you were going to create a fund or a account for.
This money, this.
This.
Yep.
And is there any guidelines that we have, that you have to follow in order to do that, in order to keep that money separate from, I mean, I, I don't know, I just wondered if you had somebody that's, you're working with to make sure we do it properly, I'm not.
TP Anderson.
Cool.
Yep, yes, I, it's not a lot.
Not something you probably do every, yeah.
And it's not something that we'll be putting tax money into or.
No, it's, that money goes in and it'll just stay there, it'll be drawn out, you know, maybe.
Yep.
See anything for it?
I don't know.
Did not be a, I know, it's a collect interest, put in a, I'll take that.
Part of a hundred and fifty-seven thousand.
No, my question, because it's sitting there, money, I think it's an interest-bearing account of some sort?
Yeah, I'll put it in like a money market thing or something.
Something, something.
So it can be.
I think money markets right now are getting point oh eight.
Ooh.
Yeah.
Not going too far around.
At least it's something we do.
Kristy Reed, yes.
This one.
Yeah, well, she sees something really crazy. Not so far.
No, it's too bad.
Okay, there's Cindy.
Yay.
Okay, hi Cindy, can you hear us?
Is it you?
No, I'm good. Uh, you're here today to talk to us about our Cobra information?
On that hotel?
I think.
Let it know.
People on, um, Kelly Augustine is the, um, EBS manager. I think that, um, Kristy Reed is on, she's the Cobra administrator. Oh, she's just on now. And, I don't, she's on, yes?
I don't see her. Or do I have to click that button?
The letter, I think you might have to.
Where's my mouse?
Where is, where is your arrow at? There it is.
Yay. Kelly, so is the.
She might be just on the phone too.
Yeah, she's just by phone.
Who's that?
Kelly, is she by phone?
Kelly, uh, Kelly Augustine is by, is on by phone, yes.
Yeah, okay.
Yeah, so we can't see her.
Is it Kristy Reed, two of the phone numbers? Yes, so, so Tabitha, we're EBS, and Kristy is the Cobra manager, Kelly is EBS, um, manager, and then there's Denise. Hey, Kelly, you're muted too.
There's somebody, oh, I don't know who else is on there. There's a couple that are muted also.
Well, they want to talk about.
Yeah, we can hear you, Kelly.
Yep, okay, perfect. Somebody has been talking to, uh, Trish a little bit about, um, what we can do to help and Cobra came up. I know we had, just, there's a, your term of employment, Chris had taken care of payroll in the, this is Cobra, and so we were just kind of talking through EBS offerings, and so we wanted Kelly to kind of talk about it and, uh, what we can do for you, okay?
All right.
Thank you. So, yes, EBS offers Cobra administration, and, uh, and particularly right now, this is really important because there's a lot of, um, changes going on with Cobra that are being, um, voted on in Congress right now, and actually this week we anticipate another ruling coming down. So one of the things that has changed, um, is during COVID, there's not really a, a deadline for electing Cobra right now. Uh, you used to have to elect it within a sixty-day timeframe, and now members and all of their beneficiaries essentially have a whole year to decide, um, and this will end whenever they decide that the pandemic ends or the national emergency ends, but for right now, um, they just extended this again in March, and so, um, your employees essentially have a year to decide if they want to come back on the plan. And then also, the second thing being voted on this week is whether or not the employer is going to have to subsidize the cost of Cobra, and I believe that they were voting on the employer paying eighty-five percent of the premium and the member paying fifteen percent of the premium, and so as soon as we have that answer, we're still let all of our clients know. Uh, the plans that violate Cobra and, and who are not offering the paperwork and notifying all of the beneficiaries that they're eligible for Cobra, uh, have an excise tax penalty of a hundred dollars per day, and then a hundred and ten dollars per day for not providing the form to the employee. So it's quite costly if you're not, uh, performing Cobra correctly. So if we take over, we do full Cobra administration, we would, uh, give all of the employees all of the correct forms that are necessary, and then we collect all of the premiums and pay the carriers for the Cobra as well. And then it, once we know, once we're notified or, or we stop receiving that premium, then we notify the carriers that they've dropped Cobra. Um, and then the same is true for any of your retirees, so we would notify anyone who's eligible for retiree coverage, and then they make their payment directly to EBS, we'd go back to the carrier and get them re-enrolling coverage, or reinsure that it, it never ends from the time that they retire, and then, uh, once they're no longer eligible for retiree coverage, or they reach the age of sixty-five, then we notify them that they're no longer eligible and, and then we get them dis-enrolled with the carriers. So we really try to make it very turnkey, we handle everything, we just want to be an extension of your human resources and accounting department and do everything for you, so that this is just, um, not something that you have to have on your plate at all. Any questions or comments on Cobra administration? Nikki, how can we take this, uh, for, um, ASIB? Um, the implementation process is very quick and easy, you just have the paperwork to sign indicating that you want us to take this over for you, and then we can get started.
I'm sure there's, is this a monthly fee or an annual fee or part of the, how does that happen?
Yes, uh, Cobra administration is a dollar ten to EBS, so per employee per month, and then retiree administration is two dollars a month per employee per month.
Is that one of the?
The cost part is to administer it, uh, you know, far outweighs the penalties, uh, about two hundred and ten dollars per day per employee if you're not in compliance.
Well, that, charge, whether you use it or not, or just if you use it?
I think that's utilize the service, yeah. Is that, did you hear that, Kelly?
Yes, if you utilize the service, then you're being charged a dollar ten per employee per month, and then, uh, that's whether or not they are enrolled in, in Cobra or not.
So if you have a hundred employees, that's going to be a hundred times a dollar ten per employee.
Yes, correct.
How many, how many retirees did it now? Because that was, retirees were what, what again, I'm sorry, two?
Two dollars per employee per month, it's really, it's that's to your actual, uh, retirees, not, not every employee.
Yeah, you just pay for the ones who are using Cobra, that, yes. Uh, another question, you know, you talked about penalties, so all of a sudden we find out if we do go with this with you and we find out that someone in our group is, uh, didn't do it properly or something happened, who pays that penalty? Does Humboldt County pay that penalty, or does your organization pay that penalty?
So right now, if you were to find out that you're not doing it correctly, that would be on Humboldt County.
Yes.
When we take it over, we, we would pay that penalty, but we're confident we're doing everything correctly and, and by the book.
Okay.
But I want to clarify that to the, um, cost. So if you have a hundred employees right now, you're going to pay EBS a hundred, uh, ten, a dollar ten for a hundred employees every month, and then if you have four retirees, you're only paying the two dollars on the four retirees.
And the dollar ten is, is on each person on the medical plan. So if you have somebody that is waiving the medical plan, because you don't offer that provision, so, so you just, medical is really the only thing that Cobra is, would handle on this side, so it's everybody on the medical plan. But isn't the total number, it's just the total number on the plan there?
Okay. Uh, Cindy, if everybody on medical dental history, their flex, because those are.
They don't, they don't have dental history or flex, they only have medical.
Yeah.
Yes, and then if you're just on life, uh, then there would not be Cobra on any of your life plans, yeah.
And this would also go for everybody in your household who's on your family plan.
Correct.
It's not just them. But is it based on the number of people or employees?
Employees.
Employees, okay.
But if you're getting divorced and, um, the husband is on your plan, then we do have to offer Cobra to, this, this out, and so we do that, but you're not being charged Cobra, it's because you have five, uh, five family members, you're only paying the Cobra on the employee.
Okay. That was my point.
And then, um, when you have a, a twenty-six-year-old coming off the plan, and we, um, you know, we, we, we know when we need to offer it for a whole-time student, when you're age twenty-six and no longer eligible for insurance, according to the ACA, we stay up on all of the requirements, and we know when to offer it versus when you're not eligible. according to the ACA, we stay up on all of the requirements, and we know when to offer it versus when you're not eligible.
Is this all the letters out?
Yeah.
I'll tell you that story about that, okay?
No, we do all of that.
Okay. We just looked at one of your bills, and you have, you currently have seventy-three people on the medical plan, so we'll give out eighty dollars a month for Cobra administration.
We can't do that.
No one.
No one.
So, I get my, so basically, they're saying that you're gonna pay a dollar a month per person on your plan to have this service?
Per employee.
Per employee.
Per, yeah. So, the cost is seventy-three times a dollar ten per month, so eighty bucks a month.
How many of her retirees are?
Yeah, but, so you're paying that for the people on the plan, just every month, even whether they use, whether they're using it or not? So that, that, that?
First, first, first.
Okay, so you're, it's just an expense to pay, when people do use it, you pay them?
Nine hundred and sixty-three dollars and sixty cents a year. We'll, we'll have somebody send you over a, a call from the local following this call. It might not be done, but do they have, um, actual call, Cindy? Yes, they did, yes, they did. Oh, give the information.
Yeah.
Okay, so, you'll, okay, yeah. So, is Trish on the call?
She is.
Yeah.
Hey, Trish, did you, did you give them the information?
Yes, I did.
Yeah, we are in front of us.
Okay.
So is this an action item, or are we?
Yes.
So this, is this, in the big picture, paying for a service to take this off of the?
Yeah.
Administration here, the Office of the County, for anything related to this Cobra, for, is it EBS that's taking here? Yeah, EBS is be taking it on. Taking it on, and we have to pay them X amount to?
Dollars?
By, somebody said about eighty dollars a month. Yeah. Possibly. Versus, then they just, sounds like they have all of it, right? So, like, once your kid comes off twenty-six, you know, turns twenty-six.
Or someone retires.
They have the.
Or.
I don't know if we either did.
I think that, there's a lot of different things that I don't know if we all know about, in here.
Well, and if the rules are changing constantly, I don't know, how to keep up on all that stuff.
Right. This is all the handle, we'll say, in-house prior, this is contracted out to these folks.
Yeah.
For their health insurance. Same company, but they're just offering another service.
Yeah.
For any, anything Cobra-related, for whatever reason, right?
Right. I can say from my end, um, I used to do this, and it, it can be, um.
Fun?
Yeah. It can be pretty intense, because, um, like, because the rules haven't changed for a long time, but it's very time-consuming, and if you do this, it could be a big deal. And so like I said, I used to do this, and it was, was a long time.
So you think eighty dollars a month, something like a bargain, is that what you're saying, Sandy?
I, I, you know, if you look at it, eighty dollars a month, and I think that's nine hundred and sixty-three dollars a year, basically is less than a thousand dollars a year. I mean, that's gonna fluctuate depending on how many employees are on the medical plan. You know, so it could vary, you know, things that are, you know, if anything. Honestly, um, I, I'm gonna make the motion that we accept this, because it, I feel it'll be a burden off our back, especially with things changing right now in Cobra.
I'll second Sandy's motion.
Okay, we have a first and a second. Any more discussion on this hot topic?
Answered my question.
Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Anybody opposed? Motion carries. Thank you, Sandy, for your former experience explanation.
And thank, thank you, ladies, for.
Yeah.
Helping us out.
I'll talk to them later.
Yeah, aye.
Thank you.
Okay, moving on. These are down to approve claims, so if they all have a chance to look at them, I have seen the book.
I have the book here, and I guess I have a, one question. Um, I see the money is starting to be allocated for the radio pagers for the towns.
Looks like all the towns are in there.
Looks like they are. Um, so this number, these numbers all correlate with what they requested, and all of the?
Yes.
The, um, numbers are the same as, cause there was a discrepancy, wasn't there, on the second?
Yes.
Request? We got that figured out?
Yep.
Okay. Well, the number, the claims are total here at four ninety-nine, nine sixty-four, point three two. And part of that has been, uh, a new dump truck at a hundred and fifty-four thousand dollars, so that is a huge chunk of it.
Probably. How much was the radios, that was?
Well, the radios, uh, eighty-two hundred, thirty-one thousand, ninety-three hundred, thirty-two thousand, thirty-three thousand.
Two hundred and some thousand.
Eleven, yeah, it's like two fifteen, so.
Okay.
The drainage is thirty-one, fifty-six, ninety-two is what I had, so I'd make a motion for those claims.
That's what I got, so I'll second it. I do have a couple of questions. I've never seen it before on billing for lawyers. Are we paying for the court system, for court appointed attorneys, or?
I haven't seen that, so.
There was two of them in there. One of them was Lundy's, and who was the other one?
I saw, but I guess I just assumed over, or something that we had contacted them on.
It's Lundie Law Services District Court, eleven hundred and twenty dollars. Um, what was the other one?
Oh. The district court one.
Yeah, the district court, that's what I was questioning.
Was that you in there, though?
Yeah, there was two of them in there.
Thought it was up towards the top of one of the pages.
Yeah, this one here towards the top.
There's certain things that we have to pay for with the district court.
Services District Court, another seventeen twenty-nine.
Those were, were an indigent, I think that's what it was.
Oh, we pay for their lawyer fees.
Court appointed attorney, sir.
Yeah.
I've never seen that in there before, so I have a question.
That's a, I don't think we've ever had it before.
Because in the Miranda rights, if you cannot afford an attorney, one will be provided for you.
Yeah.
Apparently that's.
And you're making up a tab.
Yeah, now we're starting to pick up the tab we never did before, or maybe.
We just haven't had it.
We had it listed different before, maybe that's it.
All righty, claims. We have a motion and a second on the claims. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Anybody opposed? Claims are approved. Okay, all we got left is committee reports. All right, Bruce, you can get started.
I think the only thing I had for last week was the media virtual meeting for the dam on Tuesday night, which I would also ask her to let you know that those are recorded, and if you would have a chance to listen to them, at least bring me up to speed as to what was talked about, so.
Okay, um, I just, I just, I, and I said, um, I just, um, you know, and then ultimately, that's it. It was, and that was all good, and then, um, we get, I mean, you did, did a, um, sale. And I did, I thought it was very, very well done. Um, good, good question, um, good comment. Was a lot of negativity, um, on it, and I think everybody wants, um, I think that was on there, they just really don't know what, what, what you think that was, but.
Say that again, Sandy, the last part?
Wouldn't you agree with that, Bruce, that everybody pretty much agrees that something needs to be done, but they don't really know which way to go, for sure, which way to go?
Well, I think everybody has ideas. They all have, you know, we're all kind of headstrong on, well, I want my, my idea, and I want it now, I mean, but I think that the best thing is, is we have the ability to at least talk through, and I'd love to see it dredged, too, but until we figure out where the, where, where we go with all of the product that's in the river, and then find out a actual cost, um, what it would cost to do something like that, it's all just, we're kind of just throwing it, throwing it at the wall and seeing if anything sticks, I guess.
Correct.
We don't, all we can do is keep moving forward, but we, there's been a lot of us, a lot of people have been chasing this around for a long time, so I would tell you that.
Yeah, this isn't something new. It's been, it's been on, going on for a long time, I think. And then on Wednesday, March third, um, I also participated in ISAC, so being for opening public records, and then also, I knew there was even resources, um, ISAC, um, you know. Even though I've been in the, you know, resources for a long time, they get, um, good information on there. So, yeah, I thought it was, I thought it was gonna work well, but. Then, oh, I do, yeah.
Okay, uh, Thursday, I talked to Joe, I don't remember his last name, over to, uh, he's in charge of the Board of Health over in Pocahontas County. And, uh, then Wednesday, we had another talk, we had a meeting Wednesday noon, and she called me around here. Uh, what they want to do is our old contract with Pocahontas County, the only thing they wanted to change was where it says thirty days, they wanted to leave that with mutual agreement instead of thirty days. And then the other one was raise it up, um, from twenty dollars to thirty-five something, thirty-five, seventy-five or something like that, seventy-six. Um, the other one was, uh, the daily wage and mileage, and then we would pick up all associated costs like we have in the past. And a lot of times, they didn't get billed to us in the past, but, uh.
Which, once again, we won't pay unless we get billed.
That's right.
That, I mean, I'm not trying to be arrogant about it, but unless we know what the bill is, we sure aren't gonna send.
No, and that's what I told him, that, uh, he'd make sure you bill us if you get something to the county, well, you bill it. And they thought they would agree to that. He's gonna send over, or fax over to Trace, the agreement. And, uh, he should have got it, way he talked.
So, where are they, have they, are they still taking applications, or are they?
He was gonna go back through applications and call some people and see if they was interested, and they're still interested in it.
Okay.
In the Zoom meetings, I tried and tried and tried, and I didn't, not get on any of the Zoom meetings that we had for the conference. I tried for thirty-five minutes to get on that one on budgeting, cause that's the one I really wanted on, and I could not get on it. I don't know whether they didn't send me the link or what, cause I clicked on everything I could, and I could not get in there.
Well, actually, what Wednesday is this week is the supervisor's.
Wednesday afternoon.
Like, one to three?
Uh, one to four, no.
One to four, okay.
Yep. And I won't be on that one. I've got an appointment in the morning.
Really getting tired of Zoom.
Yeah.
Zoom, too.
But, uh, see, that's the only ones I got on, I guess. I didn't get on the damn one, so.
Damn dam.
Damn dam. You know, on that dam, they talked about dredging that years and years and years ago. And it was gonna run a hose from the dam up across the tiles at the highway, uh, through then, up the creek, and dump it into the quarry up there, Flawback's, that, the old quarry, the front one.
And then use the water that's in there to come back out?
Not that settled down, and the excess water, when it flowed and started running over, well, it would come back down.
Come back down our thirty-five.
Yeah. Well, but I didn't get on that one, so. That's all I had.
I know we had people on that were trying to get onto that dam meeting, that they were on there, but they couldn't, like you, they couldn't unmute themselves to talk, so that's why she's sending emails if you wanna, if you have questions, you can send them to them, and they'll, so they're doing, they're doing a good job, um, putting the meeting together, that helps, so.
All right. Uh, this past Tuesday, I was able to get on the, uh, ISAC virtual events. There was one in the morning, one in the afternoon. Uh, it worked fine. I'd been sent links to the list of meetings and the Zoom links forum. Uh, actually, uh, there was some stuff on there, even though it's Zoom, that was kind of, uh, kind of interesting. So I attended the, the virtual events on Tuesday, um, and then Wednesday, there was also another one, at least that morning, and I didn't write down which ones I attended, but, uh, was on that one Wednesday morning, there again, the virtual ISAC, uh, information. That worked fine. Um, again, it's kind of like, honestly, being there, you know, we've been all at ISAC conferences. You sit there, and you're gonna take a tidbit of information out of whatever presentation you're listening to. And it, it was no different, really. I mean, uh, except it was Zoom, and you couldn't really get up and go out and get a cup of coffee, right? So, but, so, but it did work well, and then I did attend those. Um, and on Thursday, uh, at five, we had an EMA board meeting, which was the budget hearing. And at six on Thursday, we had a nine-one-one service board meeting, that was also the budget hearing. So, I got through both of those, uh, meetings on Thursday, and that is all I had last week.
Okay. Um, Friday morning, I sat in on a Zoom meeting, uh, representing Humboldt County and IDDA on a Senate File Five Hundred. This is a bill that was, Don Etler had introduced it through someone else. He'd written it, and it was basically to change the way drainage things are done. Basically, you would need an engineer for anything over thirty thousand dollars based on, it was more broken down, like if this project covers a thousand acres, if the dollar amount gets over this, you gotta have an engineer report. Or if it's, and it was broken down like a thousand, five, two thousand, five thousand, ten thousand, thirty to twenty, thirty thousand, and with different dollar amounts, and I thought, oh my God, why do you want to make this process more confusing than it already is? Um, and, uh, Doug Strike, he commented, he was on there, and so was, uh, John Tolbert, um, voicing their opposition to it. And I think the way it ended, they just, just left it sit there. They didn't push anything further forward because it, it just turned into a mess, in my opinion, just as a bookkeeping nightmare, and you'd have to have hearings for small little tile fixes.
Plus, every time you went to do something, you had to involve an engineer, and you'd take everything out of our hands.
Yep, and the costs just skyrocket. Um, so that, thank goodness, got dropped. Um, then in the afternoon, uh, Trish had called me about a, uh, someone was needing a septic tank inspected for a sale of the property. So I contacted Rick Rasselson. So I contacted Rick Rasselson and, uh, he's gonna set it up so their sensation is gonna cover this one on a per-hour basis because Polkys doesn't even have one available. So that's gonna be all taken care of and we're gonna pay-
At least we're gonna be covered.
Basically, the same type of agreement we got, the one with Polkys, it'd be so much an hour plus mileage. So that should be taken care of in any other future ones we have, until we get something permanently signed in, we'll just handle that way.
It'll be a way that we can at least allow people to conduct business and get sales and whatnot handled. Thank you for doing that.
So, that's about it for me.
Did you, you know, with that IDDA information, uh, do they feel that, I don't know if there's anything in the works, bumping up not having engineers?
That's still on the legis-
Is that, is that still a possibility of getting through all their forms and committees and getting to a actual, you know, vote on that in the Senate and the House this year?
That, I never asked John that.
Okay, because that-
I know that still, they're still working on that.
And?
Whether it made it through the funnel or not.
Okay, but IDDA is highly in favor?
Highly in favor of that, 130,000 bump into that. And, uh, you know, they brought up the point, you know, Don did in his, he was saying that people are, they take a drainage issue and, and break it into two separate contracts with two separate contractors to get under that 50,000, stay under that 50,000, say it's a $90,000 project, then sub it out to two different contractors to get under the, and he didn't think that was right. A lot of it was more, I thought a lot of it was more directed toward city utilities and things like that, where they were pushing this dollar amount for area. And it was more so coverage insurance, because like, he was stating the point, say we do a project out here, clean a, a drainage ditch, and the guy does a horrible job and it's $30,000. What do we have for assurances for the landowners that he's gonna do a decent job?
What do we have in the form of, if a engineer isn't there to observe it and still-
Engineers insurance is supposed to cover that.
Yeah.
Because they're supposed to be-
Haven't seen it happen yet.
That's kind of what I wanted to say, but unfortunately I couldn't get my voice heard because they could, they could see I was on the line, but they could not hear me for some reason. Another wonderful Zoom call.
In all fairness, I hope they raise that to a higher limit. And even raising it, and even where it is now, that doesn't preclude us or prevent us as a trustee from hiring an engineer.
No, you can always hire one if you put-
We can hire him for a $2,000 project.
Yeah, if it needs more, they looked at, yeah, and we have.
Yep.
I know a ball kit up here, we, uh, I think this bill was about 10 grand and we had the engineer look at it to make sure it was done correctly.
And not sure that it was gonna work if we put money into it properly.
We did get tasked with being trustees, so as long as we do our due diligence, get the correct information, hopefully make the correct decisions, we, like you said, you can hire an engineer for a $10,000 project if you're unsure of that.
Yeah, what needs to be done, but simple cleanouts and things like that, we don't need to be engineers.
No, my, I think all of our experiences has been that we're also in charge of drainage district expenses and the money and that's people in districts that pay that. Like that's not coming out of the county's coffers. So I think it's fair that we would like to get the work and the projects and the repairs done at reasonable cost as possible for people who are paying for it. So, anyway.
Well, thanks for that, Rick.
Thank you.
That's all I got, anything else we need to discuss or Trish, you got anything else for us?
No.
No?
So what, they, were you gonna be gone?
Uh, the meeting of the 29th of March. I'll probably try to Zoom it, I love that, but I-
I know you do. 29th for Rick and you said the 22nd for me.
Okay.
I think I'm gonna be gone all of March. Well, if it keeps getting nice out, I'm gonna find a reason to leave too.
And you're gonna be on the 22nd. Yep. Motion third adjourned.
I would second.
Yeah, first and second, all in favor?
Aye. Aye.
Motion carries were adjourned at 9:40.